Just waiting for Terry?
Yeah, she's going to grab water.
We thought we were all on here. Ms. Terry, you good?
Very good.
Okay. I'd like to call the Selen City Council meeting to order if you could please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. As a reminder, there are copies of the agenda on the back table along with hearing devices. And for those of you who are in the audience this evening, we encourage you to sign in as well. Members present this evening are council members Girba, CEO, Rice, Lesch, Harmout, and Mayor Marl. From city staff, we have the city manager, the city clerk, city engineer, police chief, deputy city manager, treasurer, DPW director as well. Is there a motion at this time to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments?
Moved and submitted.
Moved by CEO to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Lesch. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to excuse the absence of our colleague Mayor Pro Tim Janet Dillon?
So moved.
Moved by Girba, seconded. Was that CEO?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All those in favor of excusing the absence signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We come now to the first public comment period, which is limited to agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items this evening? If you have a comment on an agenda item, please come forward. You'll have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, council friends, arise and support Police Chief Resnick, and also council already approved and finalized this decision of Souths in Arbor Road that restricted heavy duty trucks. And the reason I talk about that besides a support in the wonderful decision and also good job, we've been served, but there are some technical issues we have to consider. Selen has been developed very fast, although economic, international, natural disaster, COVID stopped quite a lot of things, but things move forward. Technically especially, there are something coming out, especially related with the traffic. As Jack CEO, long time know that without the radio control in highway, there's no modern American industry, and therefore that is a technology. Now, we restrict that, we have to do that. That's why I support it. But we have to have a solution. We cannot lose win, win lose, but we want to win, win. So therefore, I think that when we pass this, finalize it, we have to consider something missing in the middle. I use the word midterm. I'm going to talk more if I have a second chance at end of this gathering. So what is the technical thing? What I'm talking about is the signage, sensors, and how you can do that. So that's related with more thing. And I look at before I came over about the committees. We have everything, art, sports, other things. But technical, technological should be a special one, especially like I mentioned last time, we have to have mid-tech for the middle class under the poor. We live here. The rich, super rich, they don't live here. We have to have the technological development, and that's why I want to continue unless I have another 20 minutes.
Thirty-one seconds.
Well, thank you.
Are there any additional citizen comments on agenda items this evening? You'll have three minutes. Please come forward.
Hello, Sal Randazzo, Hickory Lane in Selen. I'd like to comment on the ordinance. There's several things I want to comment on. There's private wells. A sump pump is a private well. I have a high water table, and I pump out thousands of gallons of water from my sump pump. That's a well. It's a pit in the ground, and it water fills, groundwater fills it, and I pump it out. You're not allowed legally to pump it into the city waste treatment system, so you have to capture that water for yourself. Also, with, I think the county allows private wells for irrigation, and I don't see why the city should take that right away. I don't see why the city should take the right away of any citizen to take water from within their property limits. I mean, eventually, maybe you go after the rainwater then too, so we can't collect the rainwater for our garden. So that's my comment on that. A sump pump is a well, and wells should be allowed. People need sumps to keep their basements from flooding. Leaf collection. I have a large lot in Selen. I live on Hickory Lane. It's filled with shag bark hickory trees. I have tons and tons of leaves, and they, we blow them onto the street, which I've done for 38 years. And the city's done a great job picking them up, and there was a time when the sweeper came by and swept up the streets after the leaf pickup, and everything seemed to work. And so I just see a generalization of city services continually being reduced to the citizens as taxes keep getting increased. And the city gets larger, and the employee payroll gets bigger, and the amount of equipment the city has gets bigger. And then the other thing is on deer population. I want to thank the mayor for putting that on the agenda. The deer are ridiculous. Thirty-eight years in the same home. It was very rare for the first 15 years to see deer. Now they're coming in, they, I've seen them all over West Bennett Street. I've seen them cross Michigan Avenue into the, into the Curtis Mansion. So they're really encroaching into the interior of the city. And it is a big problem because of things that I've listed before. We've got ticks, Lyme disease, and also they demolish hostas and plantings. People invest a lot of money in beautifying their property, which is a benefit to the city ultimately. And so the deer are costing thousands of dollars. So I'd like the city to see if they can come up with a plan to take care of reducing the deer population. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Randazzo. Appreciate your comments. We will address those matters when we get to the respective agenda items. Are there additional citizen comments on agenda items this evening?
Paul Raisel from Gats Train the Mix. I'm sure you guys all know why I'm here. We still haven't had an open table discussion that I've been promised, but I guess anyways, I'll go on on some of the things I would bring up. Back in 72, north and south Ann Arbor were marked truck routes. It wasn't until October 99, when Willis became weight restricted, and it was put in that it was being restricted to endorse York townships, no through trucks. And then December 99, it was, got decided that South Ann Arbor Road would be put on that also. Federal law states in 658-19 that all states shall make available to commercial motor vehicle operators information regarding the reasonable access to and from the national network. National network would be US 12. It says no state may intact or enforce any law denying access within one road mile. It's only two blocks. Says you can allow certain types of vehicles. State shall ensure compliance and requirements of the section of the road under the jurisdiction of local government. I don't like standing up here. It says if you were to restrict that road, that it had to be done prior to 1990 to follow federal laws. So with all that being said, it seems like it's more of a personal preference, and maybe a little bit of power and kind of hypocritical over the environment, not considering that I'm burning 575 gallons of diesel fuel a week extra to go around two blocks. I guess that's all I have to say for now.
Very good. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate your comments. Any additional citizen comments on agenda items this evening? Then I would defer to the city clerk. Clerk Royal, did we receive any written comments in advance of tonight's meeting in which the individual wanted their remarks right at this time?
We did. I have a letter from Paul Gerkozian. It states, "Good evening. While relaxing or removing restrictions on South Ann Arbor Street may sound like a move in the right direction, what difference will it make since truck code enforcement within the city doesn't exist anyway? Chapter 86, Section 86-103 through 86-106 clearly discusses truck routes, truck identification, commercial vehicles, equipment in operation, size, weight, and load, is being completely disregarded. Please refer to the city code of ordinance since a portion of this code has been excluded to allow for the three-minute time restriction." City of Selen Municipal Code, Section 86-103 Truck Routes. One, the operation of any truck exceeding 22 feet in length or five tons gross weight, including operator and cargo, is prohibited upon every street in the city except upon truck routes designated as such by traffic control orders. Two, provided however that no provision of this section shall prohibit: A) the operation of emergency vehicles upon any street in the city; B) the operation of vehicles owned or operated by the city, any contractor, or material provider while engaged in the repair, maintenance, or construction of street, street improvements, or street utilities within the city; D) the operation of a truck upon any official, officially established detour in any case where such trucks could lawfully be operated upon the street for which such detour is established; E) any truck which is taking departure from or proceeding to a destination on a prohibited street from operating on such prohibited streets as may be reasonably necessary in traveling to or from, as the case may be, the nearest street intersection on a street wherein such truck is permitted to operate; E) any truck while engaged in one or more local pickups or deliveries from using such prohibited streets as may be reasonably necessary in so doing provided that such truck shall upon completion of the last pickup or delivery returned by the shortest route to the nearest street upon which it is permitted to operate it. It clearly does not prohibit school buses, delivery trucks, or small trailers. With the steps to validate a social district within our city and to increase the walkability of our downtown and community, it does not make sense to relax or remove restrictions on truck, truck traffic on South Ann Arbor Street. It would make more sense to actually enforce the municipal code that is in place and to look out for the betterment and well-being of the citizens of Selen. Increased signage of speed and load limits or restrictions prior to entering those areas of the city could help decrease the amount of truck traffic and in turn, the amount of violations. Change is good only when it makes sense, not when it increases the liability of the city of Selen and the safety of the community.
Very good. We thank Mr. Gozian, Mr. Gergozian for submitting comments this evening. Clerk Royal, were there any other written comments provided in advance of tonight's meeting that need to be read at this time?
No.
Easy enough. Then we will transition to the one and only presentation, which is wellhead protection program. City manager, would you like to kick it off? Or do you want to turn it over immediately to our guest? Or maybe DPW Director Shurles or Engineer Humpherson would like to?
No, I'm, I'm happy to turn it over to, so this is actually a project that the city received some grant funding to support. It was a necessary step, not only for best practice standards, but to help to start the foundation for where we may place a future well to serve the city's water needs. So this is the preliminary start to that process, and I'm happy to kick it off and send it over to our consultant tonight.
Very good.
Okay.
Good evening. The floor is yours.
Alrighty. Good evening. As hopefully some of you remember, I was here not too long ago. My name is Jennifer Morris. I'm a principal with OHM Advisors, and I've got Dan Whalen, who is a principal with Williams and Works, and we have worked with the city for the better part of this year to help you update your wellhead protection plan. So I've got a presentation. I'm going to run through this relatively quickly, because there are 33 slides, but we don't need to spend a lot of time on any one of them. So I'm going to try and, let's see, there we go. Okay. So I'm even going to pass up the discussion points, because we're just going to really review this at a relatively high level, discussing kind of the process that we have gone through. So let's start off with the most important component, all of the state requirements. So these, as you can see here on this slide, are all the components of the wellhead protection plan, and I'm going to go through them, or I should say, we're going to go through them relatively quickly and just summarize the, what we have updated in your plan. One thing I did want to mention before we get too far into this is that wellhead protection is not mandatory in the state of Michigan. It is mandatory that the state regulate wellheads, but it is not mandatory of municipalities. However, there are definitely some benefits, and I will get to those at the very end as to why this is a good idea for you to, to do this and to continue to update it. So in 2000 was when you first created your wellhead protection plan. You had a delineation done at that time, and then following that, you did update your plan in 2013. That was not an update of the delineation, it was just an update of your plan. But as, as the manager, city manager mentioned, you did receive a grant to update your plan. That was a 50% match, and it, there were two components of that. One is that you had to have quarterly team meetings, and Dean was part of that, that team. And then we also submitted quarterly progress reports, which basically was just a reimbursement. Then the, the process of updating your plan itself, we started with reviewing historical documents, and then we actually completed a wellhead protection audit. This is not something that is a standard process, but it is something that we've used with a number of communities because, and this is actually what the, the audit tool looks like. It gives us an opportunity to interview staff, to find out what is in place right now, primarily from a planning and zoning standpoint, but we also talked with Tasha to get some information about policies and procedures that were in place. And then we actually took that, and that became the basis for that update, because we wanted to know what do you have right now, and what could you potentially add into your current operating system? And as you can see, the, the recommendation is that this is done every five years. That does align with the recommendation for updating your wellhead protection pan, plan, which is every five years, because this plan that you have in front of you is actually a five-year plan. Ironically, the way the state has it set up, the outreach component is a three-year plan, but the plan itself is five years. Go figure. So chapter one was, is literally just an identification of the team that we met with on a quarterly basis. As I said, you know, Councilmember Gerbach was part of that. This is just a listing of everyone. Then chapter two, we looked at your existing, the community, looked at your supply, your wellhead, your wells, I should say, and updated anything that needed to be updated since the, the last plan. This, just as a map of where your wells are located. I'm sure most people are aware of that. And then we have to include the number of wells and the capacity. So there have been some changes since the last plan. You can see that well number four has been struck through because that one is in the process of being officially closed, and then well number seven hopefully will sometime in the not-too-distant future actually be fully activated. So, and then I did just note on here that we are in the process of updating the location of well number six, because on, for some reason, on the well logic data, it had it in the wrong location. So we are going to work on trying to get that updated. Chapter three, missions, goals, and objectives. The, we started with once again what you have in place. We then updated them. We added, because this was not previously part of your plan, we added the, the lead and supporting agencies and the timeline. Once again, things that the state actually requires in particular is that timeline, because they need to know where you are in the process. Just a continuation of the same. I have one thing underlined here, which is regarding working with Washtenaw County Emergency Planning Department. Definitely seek opportunities for collaboration on implementation, because any opportunities that you can have to work with other agencies on implementation potentially saves you, whether it's time or, or money. So definitely work with any agencies that you possibly can on the implementation. Well, protection area delineation. I will turn this over to Dan.
Good evening. So we, we began this, my part in this was all the groundwater and mapping and the ultimate modeling of the new delineation for this area. These were the basic steps that we went through, but we stepped back quite a bit further than the 2000 study. Oh yeah. I'm sorry. We stepped back further from the 2000 study and mapped a wider region. We created many more cross-sections and basically came down and delineated the actual formation that the water wells are installed in. And then by updating the today's water use 24 years later, the water use is significantly higher, and so the wellhead protection area is now different than it was back in 2000. This is the map of the former wellhead protection area, the smaller area in blue inside the much larger area now, which is reflective of how the wells are operated at today's water system demands. By the way, well six, there was a typo on the statewide database well log, and that's been corrected. I took care of that. Yep. I think that's it.
We're going to keep tagtaming this for a moment here. Chapter five, potential contaminant source inventory. There is a long list of agencies that we coordinated with to make sure that we had all of the updated information, and we do emphasize that these are potential contaminant sources. These are not necessarily always confirmed, and this is a key thing that Eagle definitely wants us to indicate, is that there is the potential until we have additional documentation. The only thing I did want to indicate is at the very bottom, we've got the, the federal national priorities. That is actually not mapped on the map that I'm going to show you in just a moment, but it is reviewed on an annual basis, just to see if any of those have popped up in the city. So I apologize for this being so small, but this is a mapping of all of the, the potential sites, and what you can see in blue is the, the solid blue is actually your wellhead delineation area. So there are, you have a, a few potential contaminant sites within there, but not a lot, which is great. Chapter six, management approaches. Once again, this is kind of a reiteration of what approaches, what policies, procedures do you have in place, are you going to have, and what are really ongoing. I realize the terminology there, which the state uses as the in-progress, complete and ongoing. In-progress and ongoing seem like they are a little bit redundant, but those are actually terms that the, the state uses. So in-progress would just be something that is just, just starting, and then ongoing is something that obviously that you do on an annual basis. So most of these have been in place for a number of years, but we did add a few to, to match some of the changes that we've made in the, in the plan. Continuation of the management approaches. Further, actually, let me just go back for just a second. So you will see that the initial list is our city approaches. Then you've got specific for Washtenaw County. These are things that, you know, Washtenaw County does just as common practice, but it's good for you to include them because there are things that you can benefit from. Then we have public participation and education outreach. That is actually the, probably the most important component of this plan itself. And then regional collab, regional partnerships for collaboration. Also really important because it, yeah, obviously we know that the, you know, the groundwater does not stop at municipal boundaries, so talking with your neighbors is really important. Contingency are also called emergency response plan. This section is a requirement, but we have specifically not included the actual documents into your plan. The, the emergency plans, you have access to, you're in compliance with all of the requirements, but there's a lot of sensitive information in there. There's a lot of personal information in there, you know, contacts and, you know, home addresses of employees. So we have included it by reference, and Eagle has accepted this as a, a good approach to satisfy this requirement. Citing new wells. Dan, do you want to come back up?
I didn't expect this. This particular section of the wellhead program really delves into the steps that you'll you'll take when you, generally, it's for emergency situations, but as you grow, you're going to need more source water supply. And so the work back in the wellhead protection area delineation has queued us up pretty well to be able to answer the upcoming need for an additional water source. So I think we're in a pretty good spot for that right now.
So we've just indicated here that a concurrent analysis of alternative water sources is underway. I mean, that, I think everyone is aware of that. But, you know, any potential municipal wells would require additional analysis. So, and we just included this, once again, as reference, because obviously it would make the most sense for one of those wells to be within the larger area, since that is your wellhead protection area, and your availability for, to tap into water beyond that area is questionable. Chapter 9, oh, I kind of missed a little bit of formatting issue there, roles and responsibilities. So once again, we're taking the management strategies, we're aligning them with the responsible parties, and then providing a projected deadline. This is really just a culmination of everything, because these are in larger buckets, everything that's been, that I've talked about thus far. Public participation and outreach education. As I said, these are technically a three, for a three-year plan. So even though the plan itself is five years, I would recommend that maybe at, you know, sometime closer to that three-year mark, maybe take a look at your, your current approaches. Maybe some of these are still ongoing, maybe you need to add some, just so that you can continue to be in alignment with that five-year requirement. All of these, though, were formulated during the grant writing process. So these were not something that you had in your plan previously. And what I have underlined here are some of the metrics that the state's really going to be looking at, is, you know, how many times a year are you posting articles? How many times a year are you doing various things? And this is, once again, within that three-year timeframe. And then I did include an image at the bottom, just in case anyone was curious what an enviroscape looks like. That's why that is there. It's kind of hard to tell the scale of it, but when I was looking at another picture, I would say it's about three children wide and maybe two children. So that was about kind of how, how large it is. And it's just a way for them to, for the school-aged children to be able to understand what happens. You know, where does the water go once it actually lands? And, you know, so it's a really, it's an interesting tool, and it's something that the state definitely likes you to have and advertise, that it's, you know, you can loan it out to the schools, you can loan it out to the library. We do have that on the not-too-distant future as a, as a purchase. Next steps. So our plan after this meeting, if you have any questions or concerns or anything that would potentially require us to make any changes, we will go ahead and make those changes and get this submitted to Eagle this month, because next month, in theory, is when Eagle would be reviewing the document. So they claim that they will have it reviewed in a month. I'm a little suspect of that, but that's what we're going with. And so, and as I just talked about, the timeline, so your next, your next document or your next plan update wouldn't be until 2029, so you would have to demonstrate between now and then that you're actually implementing the plan. Probably the most important thing, though, is, are the benefits at the bottom there. One of the key reasons why communities do a wellhead protection plan is that first bullet point, 10 extra points on an SRF application. When they're competitive, that is really important. So that is definitely a good reason to do this. And then obviously, you're protecting, you know, the regional water system, future planning assistance, and really understanding your groundwater capacity. So with that, unless Councilmember Gerbach has any, anything that I potentially missed, I would say I'm, it's open for questions.
No, I believe you did a great copy, and we appreciate all the work that you and your group has done, because one of the things, I know even 25 years ago, when we first did our wellhead protection assessment, was determining where do we have potential issues with contamination, but also, do we have sufficient supply for our wells? And with this, we now understand that we may have, but this tool will work with the other assumptions and other assessments we're currently doing in terms of what we're going to do with our future water needs and aspects. So very much appreciate what your work has been done on this.
It was our pleasure.
Thank you, Councilmember Gerbach. City Manager O'Toole or Staff, does anybody care to make a comment before I yield the floor to my colleagues for questions for either Jennifer or Dan?
Nope.
No? Okay. Good. Engineer Humphries, very good. All right, so for today, for, excuse me, this evening for questions, I'm going to begin to my left and end to my right. So I'm going to start with Councilmember Harmout and end with Councilmember Lash. So Councilmember Harmout, do you have any questions for staff or guests, either Jennifer or Dan?
Yeah, you mentioned that enviroscape, how much was that, did you say? What was the cost on that?
Well, it depends on the size. That one, I believe, was about $1,000.
Okay. That sounds like a really good educational tool. Thank you so much for your presentation, and I think it's really important to understand what our capacity is for our future growth, though. Thank you.
You're most welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Rice, any questions for staff or our guests this evening?
Thank you for this presentation. Love a good enviroscape. Could you please, and this might be for City Manager O'Toole, or perhaps, you know, off the top of your head, just to go along with this, what is the due date for our analysis of alternative water sources? When is that analysis supposed to be done?
The AP grant. Yes. Yes. So we are in the process of working on that. And I don't believe that we have a specific deadline, but we're, we're trying to get that moving as quickly as possible. We wanted to wrap up the Water Master Plan before we started working on that grant, but we literally just had an internal kickoff today.
Perfect. That makes perfect sense. And then do, could we provide any input on where we think presentations might be able to go across the city? Because I can already think of a couple of organizations that would really benefit from this presentation, or whatever presentation you put together. Would you accept that feedback from us?
Sure.
At some point? Okay. I can maybe just shoot Colleen or Teshia an email.
Sure.
Anything else, Councilmember Rice?
Nope.
Very good. Councilmember Gerbach, any other additional questions or points?
Just for me, and I realize when I'm looking at that, the 201 sites that we identify as potential concerns, are those just historical? Because I think, or are they what the state currently identifies? Some of them, when we look at abandoned fuel tanks and such, were cleaned up in some cases. And I do know we had the discussion that for the majority of that activity, it's southeast of our water aquifer, so any concerns of that are flowing to the southeast of the city and not, not currently affecting any aquifer. But again, is, is the 201 representative of what the state currently has?
It's, it's open and closed. So yes, it is both, and you'll see that, we've got that actually in the key. So in theory, the closed should be cleaned up, but we still have identified them.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Seo, any questions for our guests or City Staff?
One, because we're going to consider the ordinance tonight. How big a danger to the aquifer, to our wellhead protection area, is it if we would allow people to drill their own wells within our area?
That's a question for you, Dan. If you wouldn't mind coming to the podium, so we can get another record.
A danger? I don't think there's a danger, but I think the, the issue would be, depends on if another entity drilled a high-capacity well, would that interfere with the normal pumping capacity of your existing wells? And you'd have to look at that on a case-by-case basis, but generally speaking, the further away they get, the less impact it would have on pumping water levels at the existing well fields. The only danger would be they, any, any well that's in the vicinity of each other, they fight with each other a little bit, in a way, because they're always drawing down, and the drawdown goes laterally, and so they mix.
Okay.
So I don't know if that answers your question.
Is there potential for contamination through these wells?
Not by the wells themselves, no, but if you were to lean on certain areas of a formation anywhere in the state of Michigan, anywhere, in fact, if there's groundwater contamination in the area, you could draw that towards these pumping wells, but that's not happening at the city here.
Okay.
What you mentioned is kind of off and down gradient, and it's flowing away, and there really isn't any danger of drawing that back. I don't know if that's answering your question, but.
Okay.
A lot of this stuff you just have to look at and evaluate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seo. Mr. Lash, any questions for our guests or City Staff?
You know, after having worked at the site of the old Gelman facility in Ann Arbor for many years now, I appreciate the information that you presented here tonight, and it's very informative for our community here, so thank you.
You're most welcome.
Jennifer, Dan, thank you very much for your time. Very thorough presentation, much appreciated.
You're most welcome.
Okay, my friends, moving on, we come now to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda would normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for discussion.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Moved by Gerbach to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rice. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say, having the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 24-164, South Ann Arbor Street Traffic Control Order. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Chief Radzick, and to approve or not to approve Traffic Control Order Number 2461.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Moved by Gerbach simply to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Seo. I'll get you on the next one, Councilmember Rice. Chief Radzick, would you like to begin?
Good evening. So you have the traffic control order in front of you. This was put together based on what we discussed as next steps several council meetings ago. The traffic study was completed. We met with York Township and reached out to the Washtenaw County Road Commission. So if you reviewed the traffic study completed by TIA, you've read the recommendations, and as discussed previously, if we leave the order at 10,000 gross vehicle weight, excuse me, that would include school buses, pickup trucks, hauling trailers for landscaping in the area. There were comments about the police not enforcing what currently exists, and this TCO and proper warning for operators would make this easier to enforce, as well as better signage. There was a council member who requested a study on North Ann Arbor Street, which was completed by TIA at the same time, and the recommendation was to leave this as-is. And I appreciate the public comment, however, I would like to note, reference the lack of enforcement, that we don't have a trained motor carrier officer who can identify and weigh overweight trucks. However, this doesn't mean we're not conducting enforcement. Just as of last week, we had an officer issue a commercial truck violation, and in addition, our officers have increased traffic enforcement. It doesn't mean necessarily the citation is always warranted.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. We appreciate your work on this. City Manager O'Toole, you've also invested significant time on this issue. Is there anything you'd like to add for the public record before I open up for questions?
Just really, at this point, I think the question before council is, do we wish to continue to maintain the existing restrictions, understanding that there is a significant, I would say, difficulty in effectively enforcing 10,000 pounds, given the number of vehicles that that applies to and the everyday use of that stretch road? Are they, are you interested in simply removing the restrictions, or is there some other increased weight limit you'd like the city to consider?
Very good. Questions for the Police Chief or City Manager? Mr. Gerbach?
Just a couple. Right now, currently, you know, it says no-through trucks on the Washtenaw County map, and it says, what is the definition of no-through trucks? And is this going to continue to allow us to maintain that designation of no-through trucks?
Yes, this would be no-through trucks of a specific weight. No-through trucks, that means that it's not being used to travel from the beginning to the end. If it's local traffic, specific to a delivery point drop-off, then that is an acceptable use.
Okay, so we will continue to do that. I just want to make sure that that, and then, because the concern is, it's going to be vehicles that decide to cut, do a shortcut through town, and...
Yeah, and I think there's, if council chooses to move forward with this increase in restriction limits, there's certainly, if you'd like, we could revisit our existing ordinance, but I do feel like our existing ordinance describes that situation that you're discussing, which outlines how there may be certain other uses, local uses, temporary, short-term in nature, so long as they're proceeding as quickly as possible to the acceptable route.
Okay. And I do appreciate our chief attending the meeting with York Township. Did anybody by chance actually attend the actual township meeting where they discussed this issue, as to not accept the potential of turning Moon Road into a truck route?
No.
No.
Okay. I just would like to understand why they felt that they couldn't change it instead of continuing to put their problem on our...
In the, in the follow-up comments, they feel like they very recently invested township money into rehabilitating that road and did not want to expose it to additional wear and tear. Though I will note, Washtenaw County Road Commission did express to the township that if they were to remove the restriction, more dollars would be available through the county to them for future maintenance and repair.
Good to know. I guess that's it for me right now.
Okay. Additional questions? Councilmember Harmout?
Yes, so do we know if removing the restrictions and the wear and tear that that would cause on that road? So currently, we don't get funding for that road, because we do have restrictions on that road, and so we, we're not able to get funding.
We do, we, as far as I'm aware, what our traffic engineers have told us is, we are still eligible for federal dollars on that road, even if we have the restriction in place.
Okay.
And we have plenty of roads for repair, so the Washtenaw County dollars we get, the limited dollars we get are, always find a project. It doesn't necessarily need to be that road.
Okay, and then just to reconfirm that we don't have restrictions on North Ann Arbor Road, we don't have restrictions on Monroe, we don't have restrictions, but we do have this 10,000-pound restriction on South.
Correct. The truck, the only truck routes through towns that have restrictions would be South Ann Arbor Street and Willis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just make sure this, do you have a question, please?
I just got to ask one. One of the documents we received earlier showed vehicle classes by weight, the 33, or 33,000 pounds proposed in, in the one possible TCO here. What class vehicle is that?
Eight, class eight.
Class eight. It's the highest class.
I think class nine is the highest.
Yeah, I think there's one more.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. No additional questions back to Mr. Gerbach?
And as my councilmember Harmout mentioned, do we need to reconsider this for other roads in town? I do know how that, how that original order was written, and is this a consideration that we should place on the other roads, so you can enforce this on other roads?
So if you'd like to enforce something different on other roads, that would, I would say, revisit the ordinance. If you're talking specifically about different restrictions on truck routes through the city, those would have to be done by individual TCOs for the road.
Okay. But just something to consider, because I know we're doing this street, we may want to be consistent on our other streets, so that you can especially have, correct the enforcement, because I do know that's where this is going to fall out. And I know considerations have, as I've looked at reports, how we can achieve traffic enforcement, even as part of our strategic plan, moving this forward is making sure all this plays out correctly across the city.
I will say that South Ann Arbor Street is in a somewhat unique position, simply because of how restrictive York Township is with their, they are wholly restrictive of truck traffic, only on Celine Mylan Road through York Township. So it does create a centralized point of consideration inside Celine that maybe doesn't exist on every other road.
And I do know the other, and as we had discussed, as I'd had the discussion with Washtenaw County Road Commission, placing signage outside of the city.
Yes.
In there right of way, which would identify that this is a no-through truck route.
Yes, so I will note, the TIA study noted two issues, location of signage, as well as speed. Obviously, council is not amenable to increasing the speed through there, so what we have proposed to do and will move forward with is alternate lane striping that helps calm, naturally calm, the traffic flow. And then two, moving forward with placing signage outside of our jurisdiction. That would be subject to working with Washtenaw County Road Commission, but they were amenable to that approach. We just simply need to know what the restriction will ultimately be.
And I appreciate the work on this. My neighbors have recently placed the child playing signs on their lawn extension as a result of the traffic going through there and the speed, which is becoming more and more dangerous, so I appreciate what we can do to fix this. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Okay, then we have a motion on the floor moved by Gerbach, seconded by Seo, to simply acknowledge receipt of the memo from Police Chief Radzick. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say, having the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to approve or not to approve Traffic Control Order Number 2461?
Move to approve.
Moved by Gerbach to approve. Is there a second? Second, was that Rice? Was that Rice?
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Any additional discussion on the motion? Jump to Ms. Rice first, and then Councilmember Harmout.
I just want to thank, second my colleagues' opinions, and thank you all for digging into this and getting down to the bottom of it. I feel like we've done a thorough job and made an informed decision about this, so as not to disrupt commerce throughout the community, but to traffic calm, slow down. I, I live on North Ann Arbor Street, I'm glad that you all looked into that as well. And I think just, you know, slowing things down and making more of a community feel once, once folks get into the, the city, I hope will really alleviate what we're hearing and what we're seeing outside of our bedroom windows. So I, I appreciate that, thanks.
Very good. Councilmember Harmout?
I just want to make a comment here, just real quick. I definitely agree with the signage, and I think that that's a, to maintain safety. I do have to say, as far as maintaining the restrictions, I would not be in support of that. With that being said, because it's a slippery slope with commerce and limiting commerce, and there's a, limiting commerce is a big contributor to the cost of goods sold. So I, I would be more amenable to restricting to the 33,000 and also removing restrictions on perishable goods. I'd like to propose an amendment to the--
Okay, you can offer that as amendment. Do you want to reword that for the benefit of the mover, seconder, and city clerk?
I, I move, I move to--
You move to amend.
I move to amend the, the--
Traffic control--
Traffic control order-- to, to account for 33,000 pounds with a removal of restriction for perishable loads.
Okay. Let me start with the city clerk. Clerk Royall, are you clear on the amendment that's being offered on, on the floor by Councilmember Harmout?
Yes.
You got the verbiage? Okay. Let me first ask Mr. Gearbaugh, and then I'll defer to Councilmember Rice. Do you accept that as a friendly amendment?
No.
You do not? Okay. So we will be voting on that separately. Again, for the public's benefit and for councils, can you restate the amendment that's been offered by Councilmember Harmout?
To amend the traffic control to account for 33,000 pound trucks with-- Sorry.
Can I offer maybe a clearer way to state this? So the, the existing approval is to approve or not approve Traffic Control Order Number 24, 2461, and I would say, based on the comments we received, subject to exclusion of trucks carrying perishable loads.
Correct.
Correct. Yes.
All right, can we, well, we will, if Councilmember Harmout will accept that revised language, we will entertain that as the amendment. Hold tight for just one second, Mr. CO. I want to make sure. You're good with that? You want to read it back one more time for everyone's benefit?
So it would be to acknowledge receipt of the memo from Chief Radzick and to approve and approve Traffic Control Order 2461, subject to the exclusion of perishable loads.
All right, I'm going to again defer to you, Mr. Gearbaugh. Do you accept that as a friendly amendment?
You do not.
Okay, then we need a second to that amendment. Is there a second for discussion? I'll ask one more time. Is there a second to the amendment being offered from the floor by Councilmember Harmout? If there's no second, the amendment dies.
I'll second.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. CO for discussion. What is the, again, we're going to be voting on the amendment first, and then on the subsequent motion, which was moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Rice to acknowledge, or to approve, excuse me, Traffic Control Order Number 2461. Mr. CO?
My question is this. Perishable, do you mean perishable in terms of timing? Like, I guess the gentleman from God's Concrete, he contends that his loads, I think, are perishable because of the timeliness of delivering wet concrete before it sets up. Is that included in this amendment?
That would maybe be an item for consideration. I don't know what would be all, under the perishable. I do know that that is a consideration for aviation. I know that's a consideration for logistics. So that would be, you know, obviously subject to our legal looking at it.
Yeah, at, at this point, I, I don't have a readily available definition for what constitutes a perishable load. I'm, I'm certain there is a legal definition for it, but I would have to defer to our council to provide that information.
Yeah. My perspective, if, if I may be so bold, I, I don't want to reject the suggestion being made by Councilmember Harmout outright, but to an inference you made and to a point that was just confirmed by the city manager, I would need legal confirmation to be comfortable moving forward with the inclusion of that language. So at this time, I would not support the amendment. I'm, I'm happy and comfortable for you to ask that question of legal and to report back, and if it's deemed appropriate by this body, it can be included in the traffic control order. But at this time, I would, I would not support the, the amendment.
We could always amend the Traffic Control Order--
In the future, yes.
--if that came back later.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I want to just reiterate that that's my, my same feeling. I need a definition of perishable first, and once we have that definition, I would be more comfortable with considering that amendment. I'm not throwing it out the window, but I just need that definition first.
Very good. Any additional discussion? Mr. Lesh, before we vote?
I would just say, you know, if the chief has indicated that we don't have a traffic control officer on, I think it would be a logistical nightmare for them to try to be able to identify a perishable cargo coming through the community.
Appreciate that. If there's no additional discussion, we do have an amendment on the floor moved by Harmout, seconded by CO. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion fails. One in favor, five opposed. We will defer now to the original motion offered, or moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Rice, which is to approve Traffic Control Order Number 2461 as presented. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? There appears to be none. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say that the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Chief, appreciate it. Good luck tomorrow. We'll move on to new business item 24-165. This is CMAC agreement with Washtenaw County Road Commission for traffic signals. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the agreement between the City of Celine and Washtenaw County Road Commission for pedestrian facility upgrades at Maple Road and Woodland Drive and at Tebault Lane, with an estimated cost of $67,856.50.
Move to approve.
Moved by Lesh to approve. Is that seconded by Harmout?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. City Engineer Humphris, the floor is yours.
Hi there. Well, I'm happy to bring tonight, this is a, really a project that was brought to us from the road commission. The road commission sought about $1.2 million in funds from, I'm not even sure, federal funds for, under the CMAC programming, which is supposed to reduce carbon emissions. So they're upgrading, I think it's 19 signals in the, within like textile and Maple Road, and three of those fall in our jurisdiction, which is Maple and Woodland, Maple and Clark, and a new signal at Maple and Tebault. This is at the Celine Middle School, and we have been working with the Celine Area Schools and the Washtenaw County Road Commission to place a signal. The middle schools are doing some improvements on their site at the middle school next summer in 2025. This, this new signal will likely be up, could be up before then and bagged, but the intent is that for the next school year in 2025, there will be a new signal at Tebault and Maple, which will improve the safety, it will improve pedestrian crossings of Maple, improve the left-hand turns and into and out of the middle school, and reduce the queuing on Maple Road. If you look at the memo, I think we're getting about $400,000 worth of improvements out of this for $53,000 or so of our dollars, so I think it's a good deal. And like I said, we're, we're really just thankful to the road commission for bringing this project for us, and we've just kind of jumped on board and, and worked with the schools to, to keep it moving.
Very good. A very important initiative. I'm, I'm strongly in favor of this, and I'm glad it was on the agenda this evening. Are there questions for the city engineer? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Perhaps, City Manager, you can address this. It's more about funding than necessarily engineering of it. Why are we, I'm going to say, on the hook for putting in the crosswalk and the expense, considering the schools received $180 million for their bond issue?
The sidewalks are within the city's public right of way, so they are our responsibility to maintain, and it is the, the standard practice, the, the recommended practice, that when you have a light, you have a clearly designated crossing.
And this sidewalk does not about their own property?
It, it, the sidewalk--
Yeah.
Yes, is, yes, is adjacent to, but I mean, there's--
It's actually for the ramps to go out and across, and then on the other side of the, what would be the east side of Maple Road also. So yes, the existing sidewalk does about their property, but it, it goes to the other side of Maple Road also.
I can understand the other side, I'm just, the other side. So the formula was determined based upon just an agreement, or what do we use in terms of how the, our portion versus the schools' portion in this?
We took all of the, the associated costs, concrete costs, as the city's responsibility, and put all of the shared signal costs and split that 50/50 with the schools. One of the things that we're pursuing with the schools is safe routes to schools, and I think that's a way to reimburse the city for, I believe it's up to $200,000 a year in exactly what you're talking about, pedestrian improvements to make safe routes to school. But that requires the schools to actually set up, it starts with the schools, and I don't know, I know very little about it, but I know it starts with the schools. So it's something that we as staff have been working, or working towards with the school to do just that, to get money back from the schools to the city for pedestrian improvements.
Because I, again, I appreciate that we're doing this, and luckily, the county got the money from, I believe, what, the state or the feds.
Yes.
Where my concern is, again, this redesign of that entire campus is going to lead to a number of other traffic concerns, and I know we're putting a signal here, but I'm concerned about what happens at Woodland and what happens at Tebault and Celine and Ann Arbor Road and all of that. So do you feel that this is going to address the majority of our traffic concerns, or do we still have a lot to discuss as this is getting designed?
I, I'm, I'm happy with what the schools are proposing. I mean, they're doing a substantial amount of site improvements that they're proposing for 2025. I think, I anticipate that it will greatly improve the existing situation at Maple.
Okay. Again, I'm just going to express that concern, because we were not involved in all of that development and what's happening, and now you are involved in it. I'm just concerned that we, the city, will now take on another bill that should be shared with the cost of the, the community and the school, so thank you.
Additional questions for the city engineer? I'll go to Mr. Lesh first, and then Councilmember Rice.
Thank you, sir. As, as a parent who has watched my children back when it was a high school and then became a middle school, and having seen so many accidents on Maple in front of the current middle school, I think this is a very timely thing to be done. It's, it's been a problem for years, so I, I am strongly in favor of it.
Very good. Councilmember Rice?
Sorry. I just wanted to echo what my council colleague, Mr. Gearbaugh, said. I was a little struck by the fact that there is not an even split of cost here, but I am very encouraged by what our city engineer just explained, and heading towards the safe routes to schools. I know that's part of our non-motorized vehicle plan, it's part of connecting our parks plans. So I'm more comfortable now that you've explained that to us, and I really encourage that continued conversation, and however we can help with that continued conversation in hopes that we have further conversations with school board and other school authorities so that we can make sure that we're using those monies wisely.
Yes.
Very good. Any additional questions for the city engineer? Any subsequent discussion on the motion? Okay, it's been properly moved by Lesh, seconded by Harmout to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say that the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the subsequent motion, which is a companion motion, 24-166, CMAC Agreement Between Celine Area Schools For Maple-Tebault Traffic Signal. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the agreement between the City of Celine and Celine Area Schools.
Move to approve.
Moved by Gearbaugh to approve, seconded by CO. Any obligatory comments for the record, Engineer Humphris?
Nope, I think you said it all. This is just a follow-up to the last motion and the agreement with the schools.
Okay, any questions for the city engineer? Any subsequent discussion? Then we have a motion on the floor moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by CO. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. I say that the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Engineer Humphris, we appreciate your work on this. We move on to Agenda Item 24-168, Increase in Limit for Employee Credit Cards and Authorization for City Credit Cards. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the increase in credit card limit for employee use of credit cards from $25,000 to $50,000, authorize, not authorize, the issuance of a city credit card to the city manager, in the city manager's name, excuse me, with a limit of $350,000 for the purpose of paying utilities.
Move to approve and authorize.
Moved by Lesh to approve and to authorize. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Harmout. I'll get you on the next one, Mr. CO. City Treasurer Assistant City Manager Cole, would you care to give some background on this and some remarks for the public record?
Yes, thank you very much, city. Do you remember about a year ago--
A little bit closer.
Yeah, actually.
Oh, yeah.
About a year ago, we actually approved a new credit card policy, purchasing policy, and you approved us to open up a new credit card with JP Morgan Chase, meanwhile, eradicating our old credit cards, which we had multiple of. Since that time, we have implemented the new credit card system and are enjoying the benefits of that. And as we expected, while we didn't know exactly what to expect, we did expect that there would be some changes after being in that new credit card situation for a while. It has really become apparent to us that it would be very helpful for us, just from a timing, timing and usage standpoint, to increase the limit from $25,000 to $50,000. I have listed all of the employees that have credit cards and their suggested credit limit as, as part of the memo. That was not done just based on their approval level, but also their need for usage. For example, someone in IT might need to spend more than someone who has a desk job that they're not making any purchases at. So that would be the first thing that I'm asking for. And then the second thing that I'd be asking for is a general city card. It used to be that we had a general city card that was in the city's name. However, with time passing and controls becoming stronger, credit card companies now require us to have them in a person's name. So we cannot have a credit card issued just to the City of Celine, it actually has to be in someone's name. Most appropriately, I think it would be City Manager O'Toole. That card would not be in her possession, it would be kept here in the safe, under the same lock and controls that we have for our checks and other vehicles for payments. And that would be used specifically for utilities with the occasional amount that we could notate in agenda items if we're going to be purchasing it via credit card when it's approved. If we buy a large piece of equipment and there's no fee to use a credit card, it would make sense for us to use the credit card because of the broad protection, because of the insurance, and most importantly, because of the 1% that we would receive back for that purchase. So that would, that's what, those are the factors that are leading me to come here and ask you for both of those items, and I welcome any questions that you may have.
Very good. Other questions for the Treasurer Assistant City Manager? I'll start with Councilmember Harmout, and then jump to Councilmember Rice.
Yes, I, you mentioned that that is kind of the modern way is for the, using the credit card and getting the 1% back. Where is the 1% getting applied to when we get the 1% back?
So traditionally, when we receive rebates back, whether it's credit card rebates, or it is rebates for our insurance, they're dispersed amongst the departments equally in the same percentage that they were paid into. So if I'm general fund and I'm paying 20% of the bill, then 20% of the rebate would come back to me.
And that just goes into that department general fund?
Mm-hmm. It goes into each department's fund, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions, Councilmember Harmout?
I don't.
Very good. Councilmember Rice?
Your financial experience these days, what's the realistic outlook of actually being able to pay things that don't have a fee charged to them with a credit card?
You would be surprised. I'm actually quite surprised that our utilities are not charging for credit cards. So in instances where I believe that they have more of a desire to get a payment on time, those, I believe, are the places that still will not be charging a fee. So you'd be surprised, actually, very many still offer us to pay them without a fee, but it's certainly something that we would be checking every single time.
Okay. That's all.
Easy enough. Easy enough. Additional questions? Mr. Girba.
And as we talked earlier, of course, I had my concerns from my own experience with credit cards where I used to work. One of my biggest concerns, and I think you've answered it, that you will provide additional reporting that will provide more disclosure and such forth that we don't currently see in our billing, our billing reports, correct?
Correct.
Okay. The only concern I had was with the $350,000 being a large amount that's outstanding that hopefully, because it can be restricted to just utilities or a specific category, that's my assurance from both City Manager and Treasurer Cole that that will be maintained. And then one of the suggestions was that potentially some of these large payments where a large piece of equipment or something that's significant would be directed to council at the time that it would be paid so that we have that double verification. My only other concern, and I've mentioned it, is the fraud potential. When you have a large limit, that loud, that amount, that you potentially could get hit with something and then you're having to deal with all of that. Fortunately for us, we reconcile and we have all those type of things done. I just want to make sure that for this council's assurance that there is a specific turnaround on when those are reconciled so that a charge would not potentially outstand for more than the billing period of which we basically pay off our bills.
Certainly. So currently, right now, we reconcile with our credit card, everything within 10 days. However, it is a live feed, so there's rarely a business day that goes by that we're not in there monitoring it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Additional questions? Any subsequent discussion on the motion? Very good. Then we have a motion on the floor, moved by Lash, seconded by Harmout, to approve and to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 24-169, Ordinance Number 868, Temporary Structures and Uses. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo and to adopt or not to adopt Ordinance Number 868, Temporary Structures and Uses.
I'm going to acknowledge receipt for first read.
Okay. Moved by Girba to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second? Was that seconded by Harmout?
I was going to acknowledge and adopt, but okay.
You want to just ignore, okay. We got a motion on the floor just to acknowledge.
Yes, first read.
Very good. Okay. In the absence of Community Development Director, I'm going to yield the floor to the city manager.
All right. Play nice. This isn't my full-time job, you know? So the updated temporary structures and uses ordinance has now gone to Planning Commission and the Policy Subcommittee, having gone through iterations at both of those levels. Really what this is seeking to accomplish is a organization of the standards under which we allow temporary uses and the processes by which tents and structures associated with those events are reviewed by our staff. One thing that I'll note about this is, you know, right now we have a fairly convoluted set of ordinances that defines different processes, different lengths or numbers of events that can occur for different uses or business types. This is really trying to streamline that and make it very straightforward to us, and frankly gives the city a bit more oversight, specifically to look at things like hindrance to access, public safety, parking, or firefighting needs as we're reviewing these. So again, this does come with the recommendation of Planning Commission at this point, it does come with the recommendation of the Policy Subcommittee. I will know that Councilmember Dillon gave me some of her comments specifically around the 90 days that the temporary use is permitted. That right now exists largely around the food vendors or food sellers that may be covered under this event. My recommendation on that is it still makes sense to move forward with this ordinance as written, and food sales could be more holistically addressed under our mobile food vendor ordinance, which please have mercy on me, can we do when we have a Community Development Director? So at this point, unless there are major changes, I do hope we can move towards adoption, but I certainly welcome any feedback.
Let me start with Councilmember Lash, who serves as the Chair of our Policy Subcommittee. Do you have any comments at this time pertaining to Ordinance Number 868?
We did have a good discussion on this, and unfortunately, Councilmember Rice was not able to be with us when we discussed it, but it really, like City Manager O'Toole was talking, you know, the policy was really very confusing before. I think he's done a pretty good job of kind of making a little clearer path for things. It did add a restriction of six events per year per vendor, so it does set a limit. With most of our policies, there is room for negotiation with the city for different kinds of events, so it's not written in stone. I know Mayor Pro Tem Dillon had suggested that we also insert a thing requesting that adequate sanitary facilities be maintained at these temporary events, but as City Manager O'Toole said, I believe this is a good first step, and that's why we pass it on.
Very good. Councilmember Girba's liaison to Planning Commission, anything, any remarks that you'd like to add at this time?
Yeah, I mean, part of the thing where this came about was, for the most part, temporary structures were not well-defined, and so now we're trying to get back to that aspect. And there's still some concerns that are with certain types of temporary structures like tents. People's constructing, using tents as permanent buildings, those things are still a little bit in the gray area. Also, you know, placing porta-johns on property, and there are some other things that I think aren't necessarily well-defined currently but need to be addressed. Where this really came from in terms of temporary uses was, for the most part, you were only able to use properties for nonprofit or like organizations that were not commercial. So this was trying to address that and provide a reasonable number of uses for it. One of the concerns was that we didn't necessarily want to have it set up where you could potentially have a temporary use going on for six months at a time, or... One of my concerns was, and I was one of the identified most of the issues and concerns with the existing ordinance, was that we have site plans that identify why those properties are being used, why we have parking for those needs and so forth. And when you start to have overuse of that property for a temporary use, you then end up putting your problems on to the other property owners and so forth. So those were concerns that were related to that. The sanitation issue came up because that is also a concern that if you're going to have a garage sale, or if you're going to have these other sales and things, where are the people going and are you providing, or are you putting that promise on other, that issue onto other vendors or other property owners and so forth? The other concern being that we expanded the number of uses and some of the things. I am concerned about the 90 days from the perspective of if we pass it tonight, it's kind of blanket, so it doesn't necessarily well address what we define as being appropriate for a 90-day use. I agree, seasonal was identified that way, but we didn't identify seasonal as, you know, just food. It could be seasonal anything, it could have been landscaping materials, it could be some of the other stuff. There are a number of things with this, and what really becomes an issue is most of this activity will happen on weekends, and it's the enforcement. In terms of our code enforcement officer, it doesn't work on weekends. So I've been assured that should we have an issue with an event that isn't in compliance, that we can deny it going forward. That works well in theory, but in practice always becomes a concern. So for me, I want to make sure that we have a well-defined matrix of really how this works, because even though we think we've clarified it, it never gets clarified well enough. So those are a couple of things that I think need to be done to implement this well, to be able to explain it, and I think we had talked that with Mr. Harrington, and I believe he didn't have time to really achieve that. So those are the other couple of concerns that I have, and the reason why I pushed that as being a reading is that I just want to make sure that everyone on here understands those little issues that are still out there, and that, you know, as we did with the sign ordinance, there's still hiccups with that that haven't come back to be fixed. So we need to make sure that, at this point, I think this is a good attempt to try and do it, but it's up to us whether we want to move it forward tonight or if we want to postpone it for another reading.
So I'll note a response to a couple of those issues I heard. Regarding the tent structures, it does require a tent certificate of occupancy for anything over 200 square feet. That is its own set of rules and regulations, which doesn't necessarily need to be articulated, but is implied by this ordinance. So I feel the ordinance is written in a way that it definitely addresses concerns related to temporary physical structures, i.e. tents. We do also have language in here regarding sanitary facilities and the expectation. We discussed that the administrative process associated with that would be requiring the property owner to show how they were meeting it, either through their own existing facilities on-site or through porta-potties, which would undergo the same review as any of our other, like, special events. So it has to be reviewed for compliance with public safety and location to ensure that it wasn't blocking any specific access points. And then the other point that I wanted to note, let me see what that is. I had it, it was a really good response. I had, yeah.
Was it the 90 days and seasonal, or?
Well, there's, I mean, there's the definition of seasonal. If we wanted to flesh that out more, but I think there's probably a reasonable understanding at an administrative level of what constitutes seasonal versus more permanent sales. To your point, it's food. It could be fireworks, landscape materials, things that are Christmas trees, things of that nature.
Yeah, and I think part of it is was trying to figure out a determination between 45 days and 90 days, what's a reasonable seasonal period? And, you know, 90 days starts to get into be three months, so it could be the entire summer.
And I think, yes, that exists for the food sale, for the food vendors, which is why I say I think that issue specifically is better solved in our mobile food vendor application, and then deal exclusively with food all in one place. And subsequent to that, this becomes one line that needs to change in this ordinance to go from 90 back down to 45 and explicitly remove food as a seasonal use.
And I believe we have a separate time, is it, you can't have an event falling back-to-back at the sixes, it has to be at least?
Yeah, there has to be time between, there's like a buffer period between events.
Questions? Councilmember Rice?
We did address, I was at the first conversation in the Policy Committee meeting. We did address a couple of things with like past nuisances and permit conditions that the Building Department will have the ability to add additional conditions on to protect public health, safety, and welfare, and then they also have the city reserves the right to deny based on past incidents or our past nuisances. So I think adding those two things in there will alleviate some of the issues that we've had with past events and past sales.
Yes, thank you. That was the one other item I wasn't recalling. That's exactly correct. So this does have language, which was added to specifically describe that there is administrative authority to deny a request based on past nuisances. So as we've heard, some events, they aren't providing adequate sanitary facilities in those cases. If we receive a nuisance notice, we will let them know. Unfortunately, you cannot have an event like this in the future because of that failure.
Anything further, Councilmember Rice?
Nope.
Additional questions? Councilmember Lash?
Just a question, so if we went ahead and approved this tonight and we get our spectacular new Community Development Director, which I'm sure City Manager is working on right now, it wouldn't be odious procedure to insert lines or few changes if we did pass this?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Actually, we do in-person interviews tomorrow, Mr. Lash. Very good. Ball is still moving. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, moved by Girba, seconded by Harmout, simply to acknowledge receipt of the memo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion now to adopt or not to adopt?
Move to adopt.
Moved by Lash be the mover and Rice be the second. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? Mr. Girba?
Just real quick, my only one concern, it goes back to the porta-john issue, is that if a business decides to have, you know, weekend or certain, you know, every two weeks or something like that, it's that issue of putting a porta-john on a parking lot and having it there for six months.
But they would not be permitted to have a porta-john there for six months. It would have to be specific to, yes.
Okay, that's identified as a temporary structure, which most structures that are like that have to come down after.
Yes, it's very clearly called temporary sanitary facilities in this ordinance.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? There's a motion on the floor, then moved by Lash, seconded by Rice, to adopt Ordinance Numbers 868. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to our last action item of the evening, which is Agenda Item 24-170, Ordinance Number 870, private wells. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo from City Manager O'Toole and to adopt or not to adopt Ordinance Number 870, private wells.
Move to acknowledge and adopt.
Second.
Moved by Lash to acknowledge and to adopt, and that was seconded by Girba. City Manager O'Toole, I'm going to turn it over to you, and if you wouldn't mind, as part of your public comments, if you could address the statement that was made during the initial public comment period in reference to sump pumps, that would be terrific.
Yeah, I'll start right with that response. A private well is not the same as a sub-pump. A private well is a drinking water source created within our system. A sub-pump is a storm water mitigation tool, so completely separate parts of even our municipal Regarding this particular ordinance, staff identified some ambiguity in the existing language of the city's codes, and knowing that our position on private utilities is already clearly outlined as it pertains to, Sanitary Sewer has presented for you all to consider this prohibition on new private wells. We did have a consultant up here earlier who spoke a little bit. I'll note, he was really looking through that answer the lens of production, because that's what we had hired them to look at, is our production capacity. And absolutely, private wells present a threat to the drawdown capability of our existing wells or compete with our existing wells. But when you also look at it through the lens of an environmental danger, it's another point of entry into our aquifer. And I will note, the regulatory environment for private wells is far less stringent than for public wells. These largely exist in and on their own, whereas obviously we have constant state regulatory requirements that we are subject to. So it is a fairly common practice among municipalities that have existing municipal water supplies to limit the extent of private wells. Some limit it completely, others limit it exclusively to irrigation. We feel based on what we know about our existing system, it makes sense for the City of Celine to simply eliminate any new private wells coming into the system and focus on the existing service of our residents through the municipal supply.
Just so we're clear for the public's benefit, what's being proposed tonight is not a significant deviation
No.
from the current policy, it is just eliminating ambiguity and strengthening the city's position.
Correct. I think in total, we're talking about there maybe exists three to four private, three private wells right now. So this is not a prolific issue, and anyone who is connected, who is, you know, coming into the city is already connected to, this is largely more to do with future annexation or existing properties that will be redeveloped, which may now have a private well. So again, you know, we're talking about three properties that in the future may be required to come into compliance.
Very good. Other questions for the city manager? Mr. Girba, then Mr. CEO.
As you mentioned, that should these three wells fail at any point in time, they will not be allowed to re-drill a new one, correct?
Correct, correct. The way that it's written is if they fail to meet the standards currently identified under the existing regulatory environment, then they would have to connect. And I explained this as well to Mayor Pro Tem Dillon when she asked the question. 99 times out of 100, what happens is they go to replace a well, or they look at repairing it because of some deficiency, and actually, at some point, it just becomes cheaper to connect to the city system than to drill a whole new well on a parcel that may already be, you know, tapped out or have a well expired.
Yeah, and as we worked diligently to try and close out all the old abandoned wells in the community, having new ones tapped in does not make...
No, it does not further our goal of ensuring safe drinking water for the community.
Councilmember CEO?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. You brought up an interesting question yourself. You said that when we annex properties, if they have an existing well on this annexed property, is that grandfathered, or is that then need to be capped?
So typically, typically when properties are being annexed into the city, they're doing so because they want to access public utilities because of redevelopment needs. Exactly, in those cases, we would likely not accept the annexation if they were not then willing to connect to public utilities, and it may even be a question of whether the state would allow them to transfer into us, since it doesn't meet the economic development need at that point if they're maintaining those facilities.
So their well would not be grandfathered necessarily?
Not necessarily, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Rice?
So there's been some discussion online about this exact topic with a small hobby farm to the west of the city. Should we, should we annex the land to the west of that, I believe it's to the west of that hobby farm? Would they be forced to join into our system, or would they still be allowed to keep their well if their property is not annexed?
So if the property is not annexed, the city would never, the city has no history of either forcing annexation upon a property or forcing anyone to connect to our systems. I see no reason to change that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Subsequent discussion on the motion? Motion on the floor, then moved by Lash, seconded by Girba, to acknowledge and to adopt Ordinance Number 870. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is reports, announcements, and updates from our boards, commissions, committees, and task forces. Again, I'll start to my left and into my right. Councilmember Harmout, do you have any reports or announcements?
I do not.
Councilmember Rice?
None for me. I got to catch up with my committees.
Very good. Councilmember Girba?
Planning Commission met last week to discuss the initial proposal for the development of North Ann Arbor at Waterworks, potentially 51 units on it. Because there were a number of issues and concerns, it was postponed to be reevaluated. We had a good turnout of individual neighbors and so forth that expressed their concerns with the development, and as we move forward on it, I think it will, it'll develop as we hope the community will accept it. As the mayor had mentioned, our task force that's established to interview for the new Community Development Director will be meeting this week. We have a number of interviews that are going to be happening, and we'll see what goes from there. And then just for a renouncement, I'd like to thank the community and the support of the city. We had over 1,700 people that attended the yard sale on this past weekend, last weekend? last weekend, weekend ago, which was not as much as we had in the past, but seemed to be a very good turnout. And I think between that and Summerfest, the city had a number of individuals and great turnout.
Very good. Councilmember Seal, any commission committee reports or public announcements?
Not this time, Your Honor.
Councilmember Lesh?
None for me.
Easy enough. Then we transition to fall leaf collection. Assistant City Manager, City Treasurer Cole, I think you're going to be taking the lead on this. This was an issue that you brought to my attention probably around Labor Day. And now, of course, we're adding it to the council agenda to see if there's consensus or agreement on how best to move forward. So the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mayor Marl. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Wonderful. So last year, actually, this idea was originally brought forward as, when I first started, as part of our cost benefit study, when we were looking to grow our fund balance ways that we could reduce expenses and costs throughout the city. And then we brought it back again and talked about it last year, a little bit on the later side, where we talked about reducing kind of the leaf collection period or maybe elimination of the separate curbside leaf pickup program. And so we wanted to have, just bring it back this year and just have a discussion around it. We're not asking for a decision or anything to be decided this evening. We just really want to have a discussion with, about it, with you guys about it, especially considering, you know, looking forward to next year. If we were to make any changes like this, it'd be something we certainly would want to communicate a lot about. So I just wanted to bring this forward again to talk with you about it. The reason that this keeps coming up is because we do currently pay our waste refuge collection service to pick up leaves in bags. We also are paying for the curbside leaf pickup program. We pay waste management about sixty thousand dollars a year for it. We currently also pay about eighty-three thousand dollars for our team's services through wages and supplies, et cetera. So it is a big cost, while it's not the largest cost of the system, of one of our costs for DPW. One of the reasons why this keeps coming back is because of the timing of the leaf collection. It's during a time where DPW is busy getting ready for winter preparations. They're also closing out prior years' construction projects. So it's an extremely busy time for them. And considering the fact that we're already paying to have the leaves picked up in bags, it seems like a reduction in the leaf collection time or perhaps, you know, full elimination or some type of consideration to shorten that period of time to kind of make the best, best of both worlds come out. We really just wanted to open the floor and have that kind of discussion. There are certain other considerations as far as infrastructure goes with the catch, excuse me, the catch basins, with the leaves left on the streets. It can cause flooding and, you know, when we get into the November, sometimes even October, November, December timeframes where it can get a little icy when that water collects there, the accumulation of leaves really can create a lot of unforeseen wear and tear. So those costs, in addition to the maintenance costs and our staff productivity, are the main reasons we keep bringing this forward where we just want to hear your thoughts on it. We want to get a discussion going on it and kind of see how each of you feel about the leaf collection pickup.
I can kick it off and then I'll, I'll punt it to Councilmember Harmout and we'll work our way down the dais. My position today on August the nineteenth is the same as it was when you first broached this subject with me and I articulated something very similar to City Manager O'Toole and Councilmember Seal when we did our agenda review meeting on Wednesday morning. I would not be supportive of eliminating loose leaf collection in its totality. I think that is a unique and special service and something that is valued by our residents. But your points are well taken and I do think there's some opportunity to compromise and find middle ground on this particular issue. And what I would suggest in, in subsequent years is to try and reduce loose leaf collection to maybe a two to three week period as opposed to the months to six weeks that has been traditionally done. It will require some flexibility on the part of city staff, specifically DPW, because we're going to want to time that pickup at a very strategic time. And that's, that varies from year to year depending on the weather. There's been years where it's uncommonly cold in October and most of the leaves are down by Halloween. And there's been years where it's quite the opposite. There's still significant leaves and foliage on the trees in, in late November, early December. And I, much like the gentleman who spoke at the top of the meeting, I come at this from a, a selfish perspective. I live in a part of town that was developed shortly after the Second World War. I'm on Russell Street. I have very large, mature trees that were planted in the early nineteen fifties and I have trees that drop at every point in the fall cycle. So I'll have a tree that will drop almost instantly and then two in the back that will have leaves on them until very late in the season. And these are very large, mature trees. It would be a lot of time and energy to bag all of those leaves. So I find it to be a convenience to me as a homeowner to be able to rake those to the street. So, long story short, I, I would, I would not support a discontinuation of the program, but I think there's common ground to be found. And I think in 2025, we could reduce it to maybe two or three weeks with a lot of public education to, to make sure our, our citizens are aware of the change. Councilmember Harmout?
I would second what you just said, Mayor Marl. In addition to that, there's a, it's like a transference cost to the homeowner because like a bundle of five of those bags is say like, you know, three dollars. Well, I have a yard like Mayor Marl's where, you know, it would be excessive amounts of bags. And then that's also, you know, environmentally it adds more to the, you know, to the composting of those, those leaves and such. So I would also not be in support of removal.
Councilmember Rice?
I agree. I think a reduction in time makes perfect sense. And one of the additional reasons why I think we can't eliminate it completely is because of the mention of keeping the gutters clean and keeping the storm system clean. We still need that vacuum. We still need DPW to go around and sweep stuff up because we cannot put that onus on homeowners that their stuff's not going to end up in the street because we move our leaves once and they end up on the other side of the street. So, you know, it would be an ever and even battle for homeowners. So we're, we're still going to need that action to happen at either one or two points through the fall through DPW. I know that's, you know, kind of apples and oranges, but I watch it from my street and I watch what they do when they clean the gutters and they do the whole thing at the same time. With that said, we also need to think of our seniors throughout the community. It is much easier to get a younger student to clean up a senior's property and sweep everything to the edges than it would be to get them to bag everything up. We have a lot of community help throughout this community. I see it in my neighborhood all the time. And I think there's a trickle down effect when we remove some of these services. It's not just the services that, you know, myself and the mayor appreciate because we have large trees, but it's also the services of the community and how we can help one another as well. So reduction in time with lots of communication, I think, is the way that we should go forward with this. And start communicating it this year too. Say, hey, this year we're doing it, you know, on these weeks. Stay tuned for next year. We're going to have an updated schedule. You know, let's get out ahead of it by a couple of years. And then hopefully, you know, maybe, maybe even by next fall, we'll be able to, to really reduce that time.
Thank you. Councilmember Gearbaugh?
Yeah, I think this is just like anything else. When you mentioned eighty-three thousand dollars for curbside and approximately sixty thousand for the contracted bag service, eighty-three thousand dollars is for the total collection and it's an opportunity cost, correct? So basically, we would end up assigning them to do some other kind of work. This isn't an additional cost for us.
It is true.
But if we were to try to contract it out, it would be of some nature like that.
Yes.
Or even double that probably.
Yeah.
I, I agree. I think there's something where you could do a compromise for now. I mean, the biggest concern for our community is the issue of costs and expense. And what are we going to concentrate and what are we going to spend on? When we look at this, I'd also like to look at other seasonal activities we do, which includes mowing and those other things which we know. I mean, knowing that I back up to a park and seeing it mowed every single week, there could be other, but our efforts towards other things too. But at this point, I think there's some kind of compromise. I would agree to reducing it maybe or actually even splitting the weeks out. It's like, it's going to be difficult to hit this whole city in one week. And, but if you were to do maybe something else, however you can do it, but this is back to our understanding what we do to understand how you accomplish things. And I think that's a whole nother part of coordination and figuring out what is actually going on. So right now, modifying it, but I can't promise going into the future that five or 10 years from now, that this may become a seriously considered issue that we can no longer supply if people don't want to pay the taxes that we're paying now.
Mr. Seal?
Would it help me to understand this a little better if I'd have seen an illustration of these leaf gather and go collection bags? Are they much larger than the paper bags that are used for yard waste?
They vary in sizes, but they can be bigger or the same size as leaf bags. So this was an idea that we thought that could help with reducing the time that we were picking them up is by offering bags here at City Hall for residents. It's a, it's a program that's common in other municipalities. They've done similar items. So that it helps with bearing the cost.
If I may, the, the larger bags in a loose leaf collection, they're not mutually exclusive. You can do both.
For waste management?
Yes.
Oh, they, okay, they did not give me the, the options for that when I spoke with them. So I apologize for that.
Maybe I'm, that understanding is wrong, but.
You're probably, probably correct. So I will reach back out to them and see what those costs would be for like the larger bags.
Yeah, is this, have you seen them? Is it like a large plastic garbage bag?
They're, they look like a regular, like a regular yard collection bag.
Okay.
To me.
I guess I'm like my colleagues, I think that it's a service that's part and parcel to the community. It's part of how the community is always operated. I understand that we need to cut costs and we need to conserve time and energy. Perhaps curtailing the leaf collection by some amount this year and gradually diminishing it as we get people used to this other way of disposing of leaves would be better. But I could just see a huge battle royal where people are still raking their leaves into the gutter in spite of whatever it is we do. And then what do we do with that? So.
That was clear. Thank you, Mr. Seal. Councilmember Lesh?
And I concur with my colleagues' suggestions. I've, I've seen, you know, I, I think, again, if we can time it correctly, that would be the best situation. I've seen too many people raking the leaves after the first ice storm and they're there and most of the winter then, so.
Very good. Well, I think that was about as close as unanimous as you're going to get. So we appreciate your work on that. Thank you very much. Third item under discussion is November fourth, 2024, council meeting date. I believe you wanted to discuss this matter. Is that correct, Clerk Royal?
That is correct. I was, I was going to see if council would be amenable to either changing the date for that meeting or canceling it. This is the week prior to the, or the day prior to the November presidential election. And for August, we use the council chambers for early absentee tabulations. And we would like to do that in November too. And it's just easier not to have that council meeting. To have to remove everything and then remove, put it back in on Tuesday morning.
The only dilemma, and maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, is so we would move from the first Monday to the second Monday, but that's Veterans Day.
That's, that was why I didn't move it to begin with. So my suggestion is, is possibly if you would like to keep the meeting, is to move it to October, I believe it's October.
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
Yeah. So really, the, the only consideration would be either moving it a week early or not hosting that particular session.
As much as I'd love to cancel a meeting, it would be premature for me to offer an opinion because I just have no idea what kind of business we will be dealing with in the, in the mid to late fall. So I guess my initial preference would be to tentatively agree to a third meeting in, in October. And I suppose if it was deemed unnecessary, it could always be canceled. Other thoughts? Let me start at the end. And Councilmember Harmout, any thoughts on that?
I'd be amenable to the, the meeting being moved to the end of, to October.
Okay. Councilmember Rice?
I'm amenable to it, but I won't be able to attend because I've planned out my year.
Nope, fair enough.
On my calendar.
Fair enough. Mr. Gearbaugh?
What's the possibility, either holding it on the sixth or seventh of November? I, when we always run a meeting right after another meeting, it doesn't give you time if there's business. And then we're not going to have another meeting until the eighteenth? That seems, that's a three week gap.
The problem with the seventh is it's a ZBA meeting is that day, a possible ZBA meeting. The sixth could possibly work. It's just that that's the day after election.
Or even the eighth. I mean, I know it's a Friday, but.
We really don't want to meet on the eighth.
For me, it's just, I think for council and for city staff, having that three week gap is significant.
Mr. Seal, any thoughts?
I'm not going to be here either on October twenty-eighth.
Okay.
How about if we push it to Tuesday, November the twelfth?
I couldn't make that date. Let me jump back to Ms. Harmout. Could you make that date?
No, I cannot make.
Okay. You could though, Ms. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Gearbaugh?
Yes.
Okay.
School board.
School.
That's right. Thanks, Ben.
So Mr., yeah, we have to find an alternative. Okay. It's getting a little muddy here, Mr. Lesh, but I wanted to provide you an opportunity to chime in.
You know, the twenty-eighth would be fine with me. I, I'm kind of the same as you. We could tentatively put it on the calendar and if, if we didn't need it, hallelujah.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I mean, honestly, if, if we know what dates are coming, staff can schedule things to, to match.
Why don't we?
Missing a meeting if it becomes necessary.
Why don't we do this? Because obviously we can address this issue again in, in either September or October if necessary. But let's very tentatively schedule it for the last Monday in October, knowing that we're going to have at least two absences.
Yeah.
And if it's possible to cancel or to subsequently reschedule, that's fine.
Absolutely. So we, at our next meeting, you'll have on consent agenda, an updated calendar that shows that tentative date and we'll just kind of watch and see how business progresses.
Very good. And then last, but certainly not least is deer population, as Mr. Randazzo indicated. He called my office to, to lament the status of, of the deer population in, in the city. It was very fortuitous because within the next few days, I talked to several other neighbors who articulated the same thing. And I've made similar observations where I'm at on Russell Street. So I, I know this has been discussed or was broached as a discussion either in 2022 or 2023. I can't remember which. I did chat with the city manager about this a couple of weeks ago. Colleen, you can tell me if I'm summarizing the, the meeting incorrectly, but we're towards the end of the, the season, if you will. And so maybe it would be advantageous for staff at an upcoming department head meeting to discuss a broader strategy regarding efforts to, to mitigate and, and control the, the excessive deer population. But in the interim, I think a friendly reminder that we have a very clear and unambiguous ordinance about feeding wild animals. And I suspect we have some members, in fact, I know from walking a dog, that we do have homeowners who have food out for wild animals. And it doesn't just attract deer, but raccoons, possums, rats, mice. And again, we don't want to be punitive. We just are looking for compliance. So if we could put out, you know, some strong messages over the next thirty to sixty days, I think that would be beneficial and maybe have you and staff report back whenever it's convenient. Again, we don't want this issue to linger in perpetuity, but I want to give you ample time to be, to be thoughtful and consider what, what options we have.
Yes, I, and thank you for hitting that point about our existing ordinance. I, I know no one wants to, you know, tell on their neighbors or make someone feel bad for doing something that seems so wholesome, feeding an animal. But there really is a public nuisance component to this. So if you see that, alert our code enforcement office. We're, we're not in the business of writing, you know, punitive tickets for people. We always start with a courtesy notice to inform people of what our ordinances entail. And a lot of times, it's simply just an education process.
Any comments or questions on that? No? Okay, Ms. Rice?
So are we asking the city manager to provide us with some like options at some point or some things that we can continue to think about?
That would be my recommendation.
Because I've never researched this, this type of thing. Okay. Yeah, that would be really helpful. I too.
If you, if you Google search.
I don't want to Google it.
You want to go down this rabbit hole?
No, I do not.
Go home tonight or tomorrow and just Google search City of Ann Arbor deer population.
I, yes, I know about.
You'll get, you'll get a treasure trove.
Yeah, I lived in Ann Arbor when that was on their council. Yep.
So this is, I mean, this is an issue that several communities.
I just, Deputy City Manager Cole and I had a discussion. Based on her farming background, I'm going to let her take the lead on this one.
Wonderful.
I'm a city kid. This was not a problem for me.
I love it. No, that sounds great. No, I, I completely agree. I thank Mr. Randazzo for bringing this up because my entire hosta garden is gone. Just completely gone. And I live on North Ann Arbor Street. So that shows how far they're coming in.
Mr. Gearbaugh?
I was just going to say, as long as I don't support a culling program.
No.
No.
Nor would I. I think we'd be talking more about deterrents than.
Very good. Well, you will, we'll, we'll, we'll expect something in maybe in the next couple of months.
Yep.
Very good. We come now to the second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on any issue that they would like. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. The person, the individual is requested, but of course not required to state his or her name and address for the record. And again, you'll have three minutes.
Chang Ming Fan, Mr. Mayor, council and friends, I want to thank two gentlemen, Jack Seal and Mayor Marl, incurred me and at least support me to go to Southeast Michigan Council. Council of Program, I think, yes, S E C O G. So I learned quite a lot, and understand that this American political system really works well, not for the city, like Celine, and also the Southeast Michigan. In regarding of this kind of organization, there are something, what I want to say again, as earlier, I didn't finish, about how we can work together to make things better, especially the environment, especially the technology. I'm talking about MeTech. Without the MeTech, like what I proposed, Jack Seale is the one who listened to me about two hours in a rainy day, what is idea, that's 33 months ago, and Mar, Ms. Marl, really encouraged me to continue to learn more, and then I'm going to present to all you. However, whatever I do, we have worked together, and I think that today, I think two groups presented things, I summarized with two Cs. One is community-centered solution. The other one is contract-centered solution. So I have to blend these two. The community center, what I proposed, as the Lansing government, in the federal government from White House, these environmental things, it is the way, community-centered and contract-centered. So what I think the water will and the traffic, the urgent, important, we have to do. How to do it? There's so many ways. But one thing I see there is a gap, we are not blending these two ways together. What I have made appointment three weeks later, after she come back from surgery, whatever, and the resident, and talk about what I propose, to go more detail.